The regular meeting for Thursday, June 23, 2022 will now come to order. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Burley.
Heavenly Father, we just ask for your guidance tonight. We appreciate the ability to be able to meet here and for our citizens to be able to speak. We ask that you guide our decisions. We ask that you protect the people in Ukraine and Afghanistan with the earthquake. And just continue to protect us. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire is out of town on business this evening. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Vice President Barti.
Here.
Mr. Braim.
Here.
Mr. Burley is here. Mr. Guillory.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Stelly.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Would ask that everyone silence your phones. Also, if you have any comments or opposition on any item that you bring a blue slip to Jessica up front. Item 1A, presentation of certificates to Mr. Wesley Bushnell, Mr. Nathaniel Cash, and Corporal Taylor Plazance in recognition and commendation of their heroic actions during a house fire in Ward 1. Mr. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a little something I'll just read here and we'll present to Mr. Bushnell. "The Ward 1 Fire Department, Calcasieu Parish Police Jury, believes in recognizing individuals whose actions go beyond, over and beyond emergency situations and for the outstanding efforts in service to our department of our community. In upholding these beliefs, the Ward 1 Fire Department would like to recognize Mr. Wesley Bushnell, Mr. Taylor Plazance, and Nathaniel Cash for their courageous efforts at the emergency scene on May 13, 2022. These citizens were involved in a life-saving effort at the emergency scene before the arrival of the fire department and assisted one scene firefighters were extinguishing the fire at that location. On the 13th of May, 2022, the fire department was dispatched to a structured fire and a female was trapped inside. As Ward 1 Fire Department personnel arrived on the scene, it was made known to them that there were three above-mentioned citizens that had braved the heat, the smoke, the flames to get to the unconscious victim out of one of the windows. As Ward 1 Fire Department personnel took over medical care, these men assisted firefighters with suppressions and extinguishments of the fire by holding, dragging, and moving attack lines. These actions allowed firefighters to quickly gain control over the fire and quicken the suppression. It was their proactive response and as to recognition to the severity of the emergency and their immediate and effective actions on scene resulting in saving a woman's life. Moreover, the failure to act or the delay in this action would have led to an unnecessary and tragic outcome. The Ward 1 Fire Department believed that this was an action of these men that saved the life that day and believed that these actions deserve special recognition." And I do also recognize them. It's good to hear, you know, when every morning you wake up and somebody took somebody's life. And to hear this where they saved someone's life, it's really, and to put their life at risk for getting into that trailer. And I'd like to present them with some certificates if they're here now.
Ms. Bell, I think the lady that was saved is here as well.
Yes, Sadie Bell. I don't think she wants to say, but Sadie, she's doing fine. I think she's relieved from the hospital. Having a little trouble with her voice, but she's doing well.
Yes, she's here.
We'll have to see. Thank you, Sadie Bell.
Oh. She says she don't want. Thank you. 1B, presentation of a certificate to Coach Brendan Gilroy, McNeese State University Track and Field Team in recognition of winning the 2022 Southland Conference Championship. Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Apparently, he is still in makeup. He is not in the audience.
No, he's there now.
Oh, is he?
Left side.
Oh, come on. Okay. Guys, again, it's my honor to recognize someone from McNeese State University Athletic Department for exemplary accomplishments this year. And this gentleman is the one that stands out from all the ones that we've presented thus far. Coach Gilroy led McNeese cross-country and track and field to three Southland Conference Championships in 2021, '22. Also, the men's cross-country won the 2021 Southland Conference Championship. Women's indoor and outdoor track and field won their first-ever league titles. Check this out. He was named Southland Conference Coach of the Year three times this year. He was men's cross-country Coach of the Year. He was women's indoor track and field Coach of the Year and women's outdoor track and field Coach. I don't know if there were any other Coach of the Years you could win. Coach, what you got in mind?
Other genders.
Oh, there are other genders. Oh, okay, all right. I'll flip the page in a minute here. All right. Ten athletes qualified for the NCAA East preliminary round and one advanced to the NCAA Championships. Sakari Famous, where she finished 12th in the high jump to earn All-American honors. And in fact, if you had watched from Eugene, Oregon, wasn't it?
Yes.
The finals, you would have seen her compete against the cream of the crop in the United States. She is the cream of the crop in the United States. She finished 12th in the high jump. She earned All-American honors. A total of 37 athletes earned a total of 70 All-Southland Conference selections combined among cross-country and the indoor and outdoor seasons. Again, it's my honor to present a plaque to Coach Gilroy. I can remember, the first time I ever met him, he was coaching at Highway High School. And he had his athletes come over to McNeese Track because he didn't have a track at Highway High School. Or you, something was wrong with it. And here was this guy, and he was being followed. It looked like a mama duck and little ducklings. He would go do his thing, and they would follow him and do their thing. Go do his thing back in the old days.
That was my track club.
That was your track club?
My track club, yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Anything else you want to add?
Let's do this.
On behalf of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury and Tony Stelly, President. That's him? It is my honor to present the certificate of recognition, Coach, on the 23rd day of June, 2022, for the outstanding achievements that you've done. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
But look, we're a team. We're going to take you home.
Thank you, Coach. 1C, is a presentation of a certificate to Ms. Margaret Harris in recognition of her retirement from Entergy Louisiana LLC. Mr. Barti and Ms. Margaret.
And yourself.
Boy, it doesn't get any better than this. It's not every day that you get to recognize a good corporate citizen and even better person. And that's what we're going to do today. We're going to recognize Ms. Margaret Harris on her retirement after completing 38 years at Entergy.
Wow.
We just want to give her a big round of applause just for doing that. But I, you know, I just want to say personally, you know, Ms. Harris, you know, I have her phone number on speed dial. She's probably going to get tired. Well, she's probably retiring now so she can get away from me. But she has been a jewel to work with, and I can probably say that some of you guys can attest to that as well. She's always been responsive. She's always kind. So she's just a great person to have worked with. And today, we're going to present this certificate of recognition presented by the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury on this 23rd day of June, 2022 to Margaret Harris, Customer Service Manager 2 of Entergy Louisiana LLC, in special appreciation of outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to the citizens of Calcasieu Parish. Congratulations on your retirement, signed by myself and our President, Tony Stelly. And we said 38 years of service. You must have started with a work permit.
I did. Is it okay if I address the jury for just a minute?
Absolutely.
No rebranding. So I would just personally like. I would just personally like to thank each of you jurors and the administration of Calcasieu Parish and every employee that I had the pleasure to interface with. I found it to be just a really good relationship, and I appreciate your patience and how we chose a spirit of cooperation so that we could both achieve what we needed to for our community. So I've been pleased over these years to represent the men and women who work every day at Entergy, who are the ones who make things happen for us. And I'm also very pleased that today I'm going to be able to introduce you to my immediate coworker, who will take on my responsibilities with the parish along with interface for the city of Lake Charles and the city of Salford. But before I introduce Lorena, I'd like to say this imparting, and I think you live by this as well. Do all the good you can by all the means you can, in all the places you can, to all the people you can, as long as you ever can. And this is a quotation from years and years ago by John Wesley. I plan to live by this in retirement, and I know you, as jurors and administration, live by that same philosophy. So today, I'd like to introduce you to my immediate coworker, who's a customer service manager already for us, Lorena Caesar. And I'm very pleased to introduce you to her. She is a resident of Calcasieu Parish, lives here in the city of Lake Charles, is an 18-year veteran with Entergy, and you're going to be in very good hands. Thank you.
Hey, Tony. Tony.
Thank you.
Ms. Margaret, I think a few jurors want to take some.
Margaret, we go way back and, you know, back to Anthony's comments about, we probably all have your cell number, and you've always been so gracious of answering the calls. I think of all the different hurricanes and all how when different calls that you've gotten, you know, people complaining and all, and you've done things so graciously over the years. It's your calmness. It's your professionalism. It's your ability to get things done, and you do it with a smile, and you have represented Entergy very well, and they will miss you, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Again, thank you. It's been a pleasure for me. We've worked together in ordinary times and extraordinary times, and my hats off to you for the cooperation.
We have some other comments. Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret, I can't, I can't count how many, how many times we've been on the phone. I live in an interesting area. You know it. And that's the thing that always struck me about you. It's like, when I would talk to you and you would make your phone calls and you would talk to me, you know, talk back to me, it's almost like you've done every job that's at Entergy because you just were very versed in the plant and your personnel. And I can tell you have a good rapport with your personnel. They work, they go to work hard, not only for their company but for you when you call. And that speaks volumes. Don't let the nice hair and the pretty makeup and the, she's, she'll tangle with the best of them, and I hope you have a great retirement. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Guillory.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret, I just want to say, I know all the guys, as they term, as President, had a lot of things, but I do think I had the toughest time as President. I had two storms, flood, everything, but I want to say you was there. And I want to say, when I run next year, I real need you because, you know, there's a couple of times you told me to tell people to come back when I was like really scared. But you've been great. Thank you for everything. She even turned my lights on when he was off doing the meal tonight.
You didn't pay the bill.
I know. I didn't pay the bill.
Yeah, I just really want to say congratulations on your retirement. I know we had a short time being my first term, but every time I called you, you was always, you know, so pleasant, and you did get things done. So happy retirement, and we definitely going to miss you and enjoy yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, jurors.
And from me too, Ms. Margaret, thank you for everything.
Absolutely. It's been my pleasure. I learned all the way. I've learned from my peers. I've learned from our linemen. I've learned from our engineers, and we help each other learn from each other, just like you do among yourselves, and that's how we make this parish a great place to live.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 2A, we will hold a public meeting, excuse me, a public hearing at 5:30 PM to receive public comment and input on a proposed plan for the redistricting of police jury's single-member districts and further adopt an ordinance creating a revised 15-member district plan for redistricting of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. Mr. Cole.
Mr. President, members of the jury, this is the last step in, you know, the long road that went into all the careful thought into this plan. This will be used, you know, over the elections for the rest of this decade. So, you know, we have the obligation to do this, and as we've seen in the news, you know, getting it right, both from the politics perspective and from the legal requirements perspective, you know, can be tricky. You know, there have been some issues around the state as the state still wrestles with its plan. But we worked through the legal requirements, all y'all's input on what y'all wanted y'all's districts to reflect for your communities, and that's the ordinance that's in front of you, the map and the attachments. This is a public hearing, so you will have to ask for comment, but subject to that, I'm here if there are any questions about anything.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cole? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments for Mr. Cole? All right. Seeing none, we do need a motion. Need a motion to adopt. I have a motion, Mr. Guillory, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 2A carries. Item 3A, adopting ordinance to levy the following ad valorem general purpose taxes for the year 2022 as submitted by the parish tax assessor.
Move on 3A.
I have a motion by Mr. Burley. Second. And a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 3A passes. 3B, adopting ordinance to levy the following ad valorem maintenance tax milletages for the year 2022 as submitted by the parish tax assessor. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 3B passes. 4A, approve an application for a liquor and beer permit. Staff recommends one new application be approved. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4A passes. There will be no action on 4B as the applicant has withdrawn the request. 4C, adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 7422. Don't move. To remove stipulation number four, which states that all parking and driveways must be hard-surfaced to allow aggregate surfacing. And I do need a motion to approve the amendment, and that was by Mr. Barris. And a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Excuse me, 4C carries. Item 4D, adopting ordinance amending number 7407 to amend stipulation number one to allow a revised site plan and to rezone from light commercial and light industrial to heavy industrial to allow industrial development. So the motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Markantel to allow the rezoning with conditions. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4D passes. Items 4E, adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 5628 to amend stipulation number four to allow a 10-year extension to an existing solid waste site. Move to approve. I have a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Objection? Seeing none, item 4E carries, approve the amendment with conditions. 4F, adopt a resolution accepting Sasol Chemical USA LLC re-subdivision located off Houston River Road and off Old Spanish Trail in Ward 4.
Move on 4F.
I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4F passes. Item 4G, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Develop to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on August 4, 2022, as to why the structure on the property as stipulated should not be condemned. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Lewis. I will read the addresses into the record. Item 1, 2288 South Perkins Ferry Road in Moss Bluff, 4705 Gosferry Road, Northeast Lake Charles, 6048 Benny Lane, South Lake Charles. It's number 4, 701 Sundale Drive, South Lake Charles. Number 5, 598 West Friesen Road, South Lake Charles. Number 6, 9339 Nash Lane, South Lake Charles. Number 7, 2235 South Pinewood Drive, South Lake Charles. Number 8, 6456 San Diego Street, Southeast Lake Charles. Number 9, 6098 Thompson Road, Carless. And number 10, 214 Noma Lane, Westlake. And I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Lewis, Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
How did we arrive at this August, I mean, the August 4 date? I know some of these we've kind of been looking at for a little bit.
Yes, sir. That gives us enough time to officially notify them through the proper requirements of the ordinance and everything, and.
So some of these are newer than others. We're just going to lump them all in one.
We are. And we have a, we have a list of these, so we're starting to move through these connotations. So we're giving us enough time between notifying them and actually putting it into the paper and making sure we've got everything covered before we go to the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. 5A, adopting ordinance to establish no thru trucks on Belle Cove Road in Ward 4. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5A carries. Item 5B, adopt the resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the Clearfield Ranch subdivision waterline installation project. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Seeing none, 5B passes. 5C, adopt the resolution approving an act of donation between the police jury and Tellurian Investments LLC for improvements related to Burton Shipyard Road in Ward 4. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a sec, excuse me, I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5C passes. 5D, adopt the resolution approving an act of donation between the police jury and Driftwood LNG LLC for improvements related to the Burton Shipyard Road in Ward 4. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? I'm sorry, Mr. Markantel. Yeah, question. Will these two entities now own this road?
No, sir. I'm sorry. It's going to come to the parish, actually.
Oh, okay. So it's coming to the.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's it? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Burley. 5E, adopt a resolution accepting the improved portions of Burton Shipyard Road in Ward 4 for parish maintenance. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5E carries. 5F, adopting ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 1934 Daly Road, Salford, through funding received from the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5A carries. 6A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated May 19, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 6A passes. 6B, adopt the resolution approving and ratifying the parish's recognition of Juneteenth Independence Day as a parish holiday and the closure of parish offices on Friday, June 17, 2022 in observance of this day. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Guillory. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 6B carries. 7A, adopt the resolution approving an agreement for counseling assistance to homeowners experiencing financial hardships, mortgages, and housing associated with the coronavirus pandemic. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 7A carries. 7B, adopt the resolution certifying that the coordinated entry program is exempt, categorically excluded from activities as a supportive services-only project. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Guillory. Mr. Barti. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Guillory.
Yes, very quick. I don't know if Mr. Tarek is in the audience, but I see two young ladies. Can you maybe explain this program to the judge, the jurors? They talking. Is Mr. Tarek or anybody from the Human Services Office?
When you come up to the podium, state your name and your position, please.
This is a great reentry program. I'm going to let her tell you about it. It's a great program that we have.
My name is Erica Dozier. I'm Assistant Director for the Human Services Office.
That's on the reentry program.
So with the reentry program, we are working with, in correlation with United Way, who has their reentry services. We're providing the transportation for these individuals. Typically, it is hard for a person coming out of the prison system, getting acclimated back to regular life, being able to get transportation, to doctor's appointments, to meet maybe with their probation and parole officer, to go for job interviews or for training. So we're able to provide that service, and it's been going really well so far with our program and our connection with United Way.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. 7C, acknowledge the submittal of minutes from the Calhoun Parish Human Services Advisory Board for meetings held on December 21, 2021 and February 15, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 7C passes. 8A, adopt the resolution approving an amendment to the contract for janitorial services for multiple parish properties. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Barris.
Ain't nobody between here and Indianapolis that can clean our stuff? Is it Indianapolis, Texas? What is it? I mean, that seems far. I mean...
I think they go for bid, huh?
I know. We might have to get some help on the actual location, but they're in the current bid process. Yes, I'm sorry, yes. They, they're local, but it's just an odd name that...
The franchise? Franchise or something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I believe that's what it is. This item is on here, it's not a renewal, it's because of the new Office of Juvenile Justice Facility, we're adding them, and that's why we need to do it. But they've had the bid in place. That's the only reason that's on there. Kind of jumped out at me, seems far. I yield back, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Any objections? Seeing none, 8A carries. Item 9A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Underpoint and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9A carries. 9B, advertise for bids for the rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment facility project. I have a motion by Mr. Barti. Hello? I got a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9B carries. 9C. Move on 9C. Adopt a resolution on bids for the Carnegie Library Hurricane Repairs Project. Staff request permission to re-advertise. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Barti to re-advertise. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that will be re-advertised. 9D, adopt a resolution on bids for the Calhoun Emergency Response Training Center Complex Hurricane Repair Project. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, staff recommends permission to re-advertise. Go ahead, Mr. Barris.
So when you say that they, the contract was not successfully executed, so they got the bid, you know, started working your contracts, and we just, it just, y'all couldn't come to a...
Well, we can't locate Kuzan Services. We tried like heck to...
That's just a nice way of saying you can't find them.
Yeah, if you Google Kuzan Services right now, it shows them as permanently closed. So we have made claim on the bid bond, and we're doing, we can, but we have no option at this point but to re-advertise.
Saying basically Kuzan Services, the name is maybe available. Interesting. Got my mind thinking.
Sir, could you simmer down?
Yes, sir, thank you.
On 9D, the staff request, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Landry.
Okay, I would hope when we re-advertise and bid this again, that this cat doesn't, I mean, we shouldn't be able to accept this bid.
Well, Mr. Landry, there is a process. If we seek Kuzan Services again, we will do the process until there's a bid law that you can declare a bidder as non-responsible, and they would be prohibited at that point. I don't think they're coming back.
What a tremendous waste of everyone's time and of the taxpayers' money of this parish that somebody does something like that. I just, that doesn't make any sense. I don't know what the issues are, but that's ridiculous. Hopefully, they don't bid again. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Okay, on 9D, the staff recommends that permission to re-advertise, and we have voted on that right. Okay, is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9D will re-advertise. 9E, adopt a resolution on bids for the Health Connection Generator and Improvements Project. Staff recommends rejecting the bid due to budgetary constraints and request permission to re-advertise for bids with a revised scope of work.
Move.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Landry. And a second by Mr. Gilery. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is that our budgetary constraints?
Mr. Markentel, I can answer that. We put it as that, the reason it's on here, though, is because that is a very excessive amount of money for that job. And we're going to, it's too small to where companies throw in this really big bid, and it's way too high, so we're going to have to repackage it with something else to make it more attractive. So no, it's not that we don't have the money, it's just far too much to pay for that particular job.
Sir. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that item will also be re-advertised.
Move on 9E.
9F, action on bids for two motorized sandbagging machines with haul trailers. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Bream. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, oh, I'm sorry, staff recommends the bid of State Machinery and Equipment Sales Incorporated in the amount of $63,440 be accepted. Now, is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9F carries. 9G, action on bids for mosquito control solvents and products. Staff recommends the bids of Reladine Pompelli Oil Acquisition and Rent-A-Kill North America DBA Target Specialty Products be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9G passes. 9H, action on bids for crushed stone. No action necessary, staff was required to re-advertise. See item 9P. So what do I do on that?
Just keep going 9I.
Keep going. 9I, adopt a resolution on proposals for emergency rental assistance, housing stabilization services. After review of the responsive proposals, staff recommends IAF Consulting LLC and United Way of Southwest Louisiana Incorporated be awarded. I have a motion by Mr. Underpoint and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9I passes. 9J.
Move on 9J.
Adopt a resolution on bids for the 3001 Industrial Avenue Hurricane Repair Project. Staff recommends that the bid of Alfred Palma LLC in the amount of $3,899,000 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9K, I mean, J passes. 9K, action on bids for archive banker boxes. Staff recommends the bid of Lake Area Laser Incorporated be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Bream and a second by Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Bream. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9K passes. 9L, action on bids for assorted pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bids of Coastal Coburn and Supply Incorporated and Coburn Supply be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9L passes. 9M, adopt a resolution on bids for the downtown elevator repair and replacement project. Staff recommends that the bid of Dunhill Development and Construction LLC in the amount of $1,322,000 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Gilery. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9M carries. That is the elevators here in the building?
No, Mr. President, this project includes the three elevators in the 901 Lakeshore Building. It includes also the elevator in the engineering building, which is the old Schofield Building just south of here, and the elevator in the north annex of the old courthouse where the Family and Juvenile Court is. So five total.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. And Mr. Landry.
What kind of timeframe, I think especially in that 901 building we're looking at, because I've heard some things that are just not good.
I'm going to ask it.
They went out during the day and the people had to go down the stairs, and we had a handicapped employee that was stuck up there, you know, that's just, that's not good. So, you know, I hope that there's going to be a rush on this. I'm assuming they're working again. They got them working.
Yes, sir. We're asking Eric LaRocque, Assistant Director in Facilities, to give his estimate on timing. You're correct, it is, it's a very important job. This is the big fix, if you will. We've had to repair it because of things you've mentioned, but this one would be the...
Are they going to do this one first for 901?
I honestly need to have Eric answer that if you can, just go ahead.
State your name and position for the record, please.
Good evening, Eric LaRocque, Assistant Director of Facility Management. Excuse me, I think the project itself, we're looking at 420 days once it starts.
420 days?
Yes, that's right now. Yes, sir.
I don't know, I hope you have plan B of what you're going to do when that thing goes out again, between now and the next 420 days, that's not good. How are you going to get these people evacuated out of that building? I mean, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just, I hope somebody's thinking about all those things.
Yeah, we, hopefully, hopefully, the, obviously, everyone hopes it's a little quicker than that, so, but...
Eric, if you could, on Mr. Landry's question, I think one of his others was, is there a sequence? Is the 901 first, or is that something you can answer? And if not, we need to, I think, look into that.
No, typically, we get a lot of that information, of course, in the pre-construction meetings and that, you know, how that develops and how that's planned. Right offhand, I can, I can say, I know with us, it's a priority, we just have to kind of navigate through that a bit during those first initial meetings.
Mr. Landry, if I could, we'll stress the importance of those first meetings. It is a complete redo of everything but the actual elevator carts, I guess you would call them.
Right, the cabs.
But, and those meetings that will start soon, we'll make sure that 901 is addressed first.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9M passes. 9N.
Move.
Adopt a resolution on bids for the County Agent Building Hurricane Repair Project. I have a motion by Mr. Bream and a second by Mr. Hayes. Let's see. Staff recommends the bid of Keelen Construction LLC in the amount of $977,000 be accepted. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9N carries. 9O, adopt the resolution on bids for the Intercoastal Park Hurricane Repair Project. Staff recommends rejecting the bid due to procurement constraints, only received one bid, and request permission to re-advice for bids with a revised scope of work. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Gilery. Is there any discussion? I'd like to just say, I've had several inquiries about when that park is going to be open. So what kind of timeframe do y'all, you guys think we're looking at? To re-advertise? Six months?
No, I think we can advertise sooner than that, we just put together a different package.
I mean, the actual start time, probably six months?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, 9O passes. 9P, action on bids for crushed stone.
Move on 9P.
Staff recommends the bids of Apex Aggregate Supply LLC, DP Aggregates LLC and Port Aggregates Incorporated be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 9P carries. We have a motion to adjourn.